Okay, thank you. We'll get going. We'll bring the meeting to order here on Tuesday, February 6th. And our first matter is a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the Campfire Club of America. This is an application for a wetlands permit, steep slopes permit, tree removal permit, and a stormwater pollution prevention plan approval. This is at 230 Campfire Road. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Barrett, site planner for the project. I'm here with the president of the Campfire Club, U Wiley, and the chairman of the building committee is Ward French, and Alan Pilch is the project engineer. In that, I think that the board is very familiar with this. We'll try to keep this brief. So what the Campfire Club would like to do, Campfire Road is right out here. This is the main parking lot that's here now. They have an existing council hall that's right here. And if you look in section, you can see this would be the existing council hall, and they want to install a new council hall generally over the existing council hall. It will be two levels as opposed to the existing council hall was one. So it's essentially doubling the floor space. They need the space for gatherings, for storage, archives. So what we're going to do is we're going to rotate the building to be in line with the existing main cabin. It's going to be covered with a covered walkway with a pavilion in the middle. A new feature is going to be a gravel loop road that's going to access and be able to drop off the main cabin at the upper level of the council hall. And of course, you can still get into the council hall from the front level. The area you see here is really the area where we're going to have to be doing the earthwork and repaving. This area here is where Alan Pilch has designed the stormwater. So that's generally the project. So in order to put the new council hall in, there's going to be grading, there's going to be erosion controls, tree removals, slope disturbance. And we've detailed all that on the plans, and I think we've satisfied most of the comments received from the planning board as well as staff. I think some of the outstanding comments that I have to take care of are in reference to Steve Coleman's memo that was issued recently. And I'll quickly go over those, and we really have no problem with them, and we can certainly get all those taken care of. We do note that the wetland buffer cost estimate, we need to adjust that, and we can take care of that accordingly. One of the things that we talked about at the meeting, and we have added a note to the plans, and what we'll be doing is, one of the things that Steve was concerned with, in order to capture the runoff from this portion of the driveway, this driveway was paved about 10 years ago, and as part of this project, the project engineer is going to capture this stormwater that's coming off of here and treat it in the -- but in order to get that water and collect it and get it over there, we installed a curb right here so the water, so he could actually capture the water. The issue was we have wetlands C and wetland D are right here. They're connected by a pipe, and then they travel and they ultimately get down to the main wetland. And I think Steve's concern was, in the present condition, water is feeding into the, from the parking lot, into wetlands C and D. There is a small watershed behind it that also feeds from overland. So what we decided to do, and I'll discuss it with Steve to see if it's acceptable to him, but what we'll do is every 15 feet, we'll leave a 12-inch gap in the block. And what that will do, that will allow portions of the stormwater to bleed through and continue to get into the wetland. And remember, during construction, we're going to have a core log in front of these, and we're going to leave that core log there right through. The plants will grow right through it. So I think Steve's concerned with any sands or sediments washing in. I think it'll get trapped by the core log before it gets into the wetland. So I'll just make sure that Steve's okay with that before we finalize that.
And that will take care of Steve's concern with making sure that the wetland is, you know, still has water flowing in sufficiently? Yep, okay.
We've got to put some details on about the deer netting. We can certainly take care of that. We need to put some protocols on the plan of this area. Here is the area in the wetland buffer that's going to have to, this is where the stormwater basin and all the infiltrators are, and there's a lot of invasives in there now. So we'll be putting some protocols on there on how that's going to be managed, and we'll get that on there and make sure that Steve is satisfied with that. We're going to add the 30-inch oak to the, make sure that we have protections for that on the tree replacement and monitoring plan. That's the specimen tree. Well, actually, we have a spruce tree here, but the 30-inch oak is here. So we'll put some language in there to make sure that is protected during the monitoring period. We need to adjust the tree cost estimate accordingly. There's no problem there. And I think the last thing we talked about, and I know this is a subject that Bob has talked about and Steve, on the erosion control plan, we had been showing a gravel speed bump right below these two basins here. The idea was any water rushing down would get caught in that and directed either to travel to the temporary sediment basins or to get into these catch basins. And I think the concern is the gravel, once the vehicles track over it, is going to spread all over. So I think what we should just do is just make it a temporary asphalt curb, just make it like a big speed bump, and when we get ready to pave, we'll just rip it out.
Makes sense?
Makes sense.
With that, I want Alan --
Keep that on a permanent basis or just temporarily for the construction?
Just for the construction.
Just for the construction.
Okay.
Just to keep everything from washing down the road.
Good evening. I'll just briefly go over the stormwater system, just so you at least hear.
Excuse me. You have to always tell us who you are for the record.
Oh, Alan Pilch, LP Engineering.
Still Alan Pilch.
I still am Pilch. It was the last time I was here, too.
The year changed. We just wanted to --
No, no, that's a good point. You never know what I could be turning into. Essentially, the stormwater drainage system works by the redevelopment area of the project, which is really here, the council hall building, existing building, and the gravel loop road, are conveyed into a subsurface infiltration facility, which captures and treats 1.5 inches of precipitation. It has a diversion, which actually conveys it to a detention pond, pocket pond, located to the west of it. And basically, that, any excess flow above 1.5 inches of precipitation goes and is treated, and the peak flows are attenuated in that basin. In addition, it picks up the flows from the existing parking area and access from Campfire Road. And essentially, what happens there, too, is that runoff, which, since it went from gravel to paved, it is accounted for, that change in runoff is accounted for in the detention basin. And as I say, it gets treated there. The water quality volume is captured and treated. We accomplished the runoff reduction volumes in both facilities, and so that's kind of like how the system works. I'll just also briefly mention that there are site distance improvements, which are being proposed as well, both at the main drive, which includes cutting back the, I'll say the rock and soil on the west side of the drive, about 18 feet in distance from the edge of pavement, in order to provide the stopping site distance. And some brush will be removed to the east of the drive in order to also provide ongoing stopping site distance at the main drive. In addition, there were three spruce trees, this is at the westerly maintenance exit, to provide stopping site distance there. There were three spruce trees, one of which was not doing well, two were growing up into the existing electric wires, which is probably not a good thing in the first place. And there were some brush as well, really just saplings and some brush between the fence line and the edge of road, which will be removed. It's just about 100 feet by about 20 feet, and that's going to be removed, too, and that'll improve the site distance for vehicles coming down the hill toward the maintenance drive.
Right. And then consistent with Bob's comment, we'll have a sightline maintenance agreement recorded.
Correct.
Which will maintain this in perpetuity.
With regard to the town engineer comments, I believe we did submit the draft stormwater pollution prevention plan, maintenance stormwater --
They'll fair request that it's in Word, so we can combine that with ours.
Shall be done.
And then I can send it over to Ms. Jennifer for her review.
Sure, absolutely. And I see that there's a requirement for a performance bond. I'll let the people at Campfire Club arrange for that. We did also prepare a notice of intent, and I believe we also had submitted the MS4 form as well for signatures, so we can obtain coverage under the Speedy's --
The only reason I put that in there in ST3 is that once everything's signed off, and I sign, I give it to you. I'd just like to see the acknowledgement letter from Tony Chiavi up at Albany, that's all.
Correct. We will provide the profiles of all the storm drainage facilities as requested. We'll finish that up and get that over to you. And I see you do say you'd like it in Word format, which is fine. And I believe we did submit an engineer's cost estimate. It was on the way. I knew we had started preparing. I wasn't sure if we had submitted.
I did not see an engineer's estimate.
Okay.
What I saw for the plantings for Stephen, but I did not see --
We'll finish that up and get it to you. Okay. So the other items, yes, they're very simple.
If you don't mind, when you submit the engineer's estimate and the unit cost, give it to me in an Excel spreadsheet.
Sure.
We'll revise it and modify, and it's a lot easier to do it that way.
It is. We always do that.
Okay.
Okay. And that's it.
Great.
Quick question. On the main entrance, at the main entrance, where you're removing about 18 feet of the soil and rock face, are you going to have any, are you going to need to reinforce or stabilize that slope in any way?
I believe we're going to find that it's really going to be a rock face at that location, so I think it's not going to be a stabilization --
Okay.
-- problem.
Okay. Steve, did you have any other comments that you wanted to add?
No, I think Jerry went through them, and I'm okay with those and would recommend that just be part of the final approval.
Conditions. Okay. Same Bob? Okay. Sabrina, anything?
Nothing. All my comments have been satisfied.
Right. Right. And we have the information from the ZBA with their approvals and their findings. Okay. Any questions from board members?
Nope.
Any questions from the public on this matter? Not seeing any. Is there any, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Yep. I guess what we need to do is, we didn't do it, prepare a draft of the resolution, so we'll just do that for the next time around. So what we'll do is, if staff could put together the draft resolution for the next time we meet for items, March 6th. So we'll have you done and set and inside of the century, just inside. Very good. Do you want a motion for the resolution to prepare it?
Sure.
Is there a motion, then?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. See you then. Okay.
Actually, you don't have to come. You don't want to. Yep. We move now to a request for an extension. This is on Kerry Holmes, LLC, formerly Belay subdivision, application for a tree removal permit, 54 and 60 Kerry Lane. Sabrina, are there any issues? I don't think there were any issues from Les.
No.
So this is an extension for one year of the tree removal permit. So not seeing any issues or problems. Is there a motion to grant the extension?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We move now to a discussion item, and this is, thank you very much for you guys on very short notice, finding your way down here. So this is a concept study, a discussion regarding the concept study for legalization of the unauthorized steep slopes.
God bless you.
Wetlands disturbance at 402 Sorrel Street. So I just thought it would be helpful for all parties, especially for the applicant, if we were able to talk about what we saw on Saturday and perhaps start to talk about what we think are the appropriate strategies to work through this. And I very much appreciate your, again, coming here on short notice. I think it helps us and might even help council exactly in terms of our recommendations with the town prosecutor, as this is before the prosecutor as well. So I put together a memo. I don't know if it was shared with you guys. Okay. It was an internal memo I circulated to the planning board and staff, just to get some, to generate some thoughts and generate some conversation. I mean, I think, I think it's fair to say what we saw there was rather stunning compared to what the permits had approved.
You mean stunning, not in a good way?
Yes, yes, exactly. I mean, the final result was actually quite stunning, quite gorgeous, but what was alarming, and I say stunning, but I would say also probably from the standpoint, especially of the ERB, who had worked on this before, I would probably venture to say that their response would have been more of that this was infuriating, that this went on after all the time it was spent apparently going through the permit process. But my memo, basically, and all the planning board members have it, staff has it, is basically trying to give some sort of context and some sort of thoughts in terms of direction, what we want to do here. From my personal standpoint, I think it's important to recognize that this applicant also had, when they, you know, acquired the property, it was approved for a five-lot subdivision, for five separate home sites. And I would say that the impacts from that kind of construction, short term and long term, would be greater than what we saw out there. Nonetheless, I think the property is a classic one, and why we have a 150-foot setback for wetlands in these areas when we have very steep slopes contiguous to wetlands and wetland buffers. It's probably a textbook case in terms of stormwater sheet runoff. This would be something that would be taught, I guess, in a class. This would be the example. So that's an issue. And not to make light of it, this, it's serious violations, and it's also, it's with our public water supply. This is a source point for the Croton watershed, and, you know, people in this town drink this water. People, you know, south of us drink this water, and it's really a serious thing. So anyway, my thoughts are, and this is just for standpoint of opening conversation, is that we really have to be very strict and very careful with this, and, you know, the applicant's just going to have to work with us and hopefully sign on and cooperate with us, because I think at this point, not only do we have to, you know, restore the protections that were there naturally to the environment, but I think to the extent that there were conditions there that preexisted that were detrimental, I think those need to be corrected as well. We have to take this as an opportunity to cure problems in this immediate vicinity. And this is not from the standpoint of punishment or et cetera, it's just from the standpoint of trying to undo what's been done there, and with an eye toward getting back to either zero or even better than where we were before. And I suspect frankly, deep down, that the applicant probably would agree with that when, you know, upon consideration and thought. So there are a couple of specific things I mentioned in here. You know, we have no idea of the number of trees that were cleared. We can look at these photos forever, but we can look at the contiguous wooded areas and surmise what it might be. But my suggestion would be that we let the environmental coordinator do an assessment and come up with an estimate. It might be more liberal than literally what was actually removed, and try to come up with some sort of number in terms of what has to be done for mitigation and a tree, off-site tree plan. The slopes, I leave that to the engineers, but it's clear to me, you know, I'm not an engineer in this area, but something has to be done with the speed and the runoff on this slope. It's just extraordinary to me. And I think we've already seen, I can tell you this morning, driving out there, I live fairly close by, the road was covered with ice because of the runoff from the property, and it's just flat out unsafe. And this is a kind of a condition that we should be working, I think, with DPW to try to cure and fix. With regard to the stream bed and the riprap, again, I think ERB, Steve, and Bob, and board members here will have input, but clearly, it can't be left in the condition that it's left in. It's got to be cured. It's got to be put in a position, I believe, that takes care of this transportation system that we set up for water. So those are a couple of quick ideas, but again, because we're talking about, in my opinion, because we're talking about something that lies in the public watershed, it is of critical importance that we get this right. So with that, I'll shut up for a while. I can't promise I'll shut up all night, but I'll shut up for a while and let the other board members weigh in with their thoughts. I know Greg wasn't there, so, you know, I guess we took a couple of hours out there in that freezing cold, and I had to thank, thanks to you guys for taking us around, and I think we saw everything that we needed to see, and --
Thanks for doing that for us on that cold day. I suspect that maybe you thought we wouldn't show up, it was so cold.
Yeah.
We were only taking our --
But sincerely, thank you for doing that for us.
Yeah, I have some thoughts. I agree in general with what the chairman said. You know, there is certainly a comparison between what would have happened under the 1997 subdivision and what has happened now. In some ways, it might be, you know, equal. In some ways, it's definitely worse. I feel that, you know, the area seems stable at the moment, except for that one set of swales that goes back down to the, I guess that would be the south end of the property. Where was the ice? At the south end?
South end.
South end. So that's a real hazard, and that needs some serious reconsideration. You know, it's move, can the entrance there be moved? And can that water then be turned into a slighter pitch off the hill and then spread out more on some other land that's, you know, that's down gradient? I know when we were talking, when we were talking about, you know, that would help there. You know, core logs might be good to keep the mud off. That won't help in the winter, you know, when the water goes through and you make ice. So there has to be a drainage consideration if that can't be controlled and fixed and made equal to what it should have been, or what it was in the past before it was touched. You know, we have to worry about the water going into the wetland. I don't want mud going into the wetland, because that constrains eventually the flow and the nature of the habitat there, so that, you know, the whole bunch of engineering that has to be done if it can't be corrected. But I would emphasize, I would like to see a plan where it's corrected at the south end, and so that the water doesn't just whistle over the bluff there and go down, and that the slopes are changed so that they're a better grade and percolation can occur. At the north end, I know that you raised an interesting idea that even though the water whistles down, the revetted intermittent water course, and that you're thinking of reinforcing the revetments, you know, and the premise is that because you're in an oxbow, if you would, with the way the water flows around and comes back, that, you know, having the, some water leave earlier than it would have otherwise left, that might be good. But if that's going to be, you know, a thing that you think is going to work, then we want to really see good calculations and understand it, because you may have, you may have a unique situation here where, you know, that idea, if it works, and Bob will be, you know, happy to give you his opinion on all of that, if that works, well then, that may be a benefit, particularly if you have the pools that are established up gradient, so the amount of water that gets there is lessened, and you have your own way of slowing down the volume that goes down that hill in a heavy rainstorm. You know, so that, you know, and you pointed that out, and that was helpful. You know, the other things that I would be looking for is a pesticide management plan. You know, the beauty of the existing hillside, I consider that it has some beauty at least, is that it is irrigated. Now, if the irrigation system doesn't work, you know, then you're going to have, under drought conditions and other conditions, you may lose control of the hill. So there's going to have to be, not only pesticide management, there's going to have to be a plan that I'd like to see as to how it's going to be maintained in perpetuity to make sure that it, you know, that it doesn't escape, you know, the normal controls that might be used. I know you talked in terms of saying, well, we're going to make a lot of this in the lower end and the north portion meadow. Well, that may be another thing that you should consider, too, is to have meadow kind of vegetation to, you know, to help slow the sheet flow down, because, you know, grass certainly allows some percolation to occur. It's much better than mud, you know, but it's not as good as other vegetative materials, you know, that would allow, you know, more uptake of the water and more percolation into the ground. Other than that, I don't have any more comments for the moment.
Sheila, Tom?
Well, I agree with everything that you've been saying. Just to give some perspective to the steepness and the height of all of this, I, at the end of our walkthrough, my phone registered that we did 13 flights of stairs climbing up this property. And although it is a very beautiful aesthetic, and I understand that there's potential to do a lot of off-site mitigation in the roadway and improve that, and then, you know, continuing over across the road into the wetland, personally, I would like to see more done with the planting mitigation that's done onsite as well, which I think, you know, I look forward to hearing what Steve estimates as the ballpark of the total amount of trees that we're taking down on the property. But what's, you know, it sort of does look like a clear-cut meadow compared to the surrounding wooded area, and given how steep it is and how open it is, that the mitigation plantings that have been done to date are sort of more ornamental than, you know, the things that have the potential to be big, gloomy growth. And also the doing, you know, swell kind of bioswell plantings that would absorb more water.
Yeah, so I can't disagree with all of the thoughts and recommendations that Dick and Sheila have about being sure that the proper engineering is done to resolve what I think we perceive, the town perceives, as problems that have been created by this invasive activity that's been done without a proper permit. I can't disagree with that. I think all that has to be done. But I, at the same time, I just feel that the conversation's starting at the wrong place for me. I don't agree. I can't see any evidence. I haven't done the study. But it's hard for me to agree that a five-lot subdivision would have greater impacts than what's been done there. I believe for any five-lot subdivision, on each one of those lots, we'd have grading and clearing limit lines, which would result in forested area on that hillside that would be an environment that would presumably maintain habitat for species that we care about. Maybe some we don't, but that's, you know, that's the nature of where we live. Any septic systems that would be put in, any drainage that would be put in, would all be engineered anyway, so that I don't believe that they would necessarily, that those kinds of improvements on five lots would necessarily have a greater impact than one, because we have technical staff on the town to be sure that that doesn't happen. And we have engineering structures that are state-of-the-art to make sure that kind of thing doesn't happen. Is there always a chance that these things will fail? Yeah, but then we have these other systems that backstop that, like duplicate septic areas, just in case there's a failure, for example. Drainage, we have drainage systems to do that. Wetlands, the wetlands are awash, because in the wetland setback, we're going to require that anyway in a five-lot subdivision. I don't think that that's really in play here. The only thing that, the items that we care about, that I can see, are that a five-lot subdivision would require more impacts, would be the steep slopes, just to get the driveways up there and to create the pads. And up there, there's just a lot of steep slopes, no question. I believe that in a five-lot subdivision on those steep slopes, those would be the areas that we probably would say, you would not be allowed to clear. That's where we would probably require that there be the existing forest and its ground cover and all of that stuff pretty much made it. I'm projecting here, but we've been doing this for a long time, and so I think that there's a certain amount of experience that my intuition, I think, is right about this. So I'm not, for me, the five-lot subdivision, if we want to put it on the table as a justification for giving relief for what has been done, I can't see it. I don't think there's justification for that. I think it's not, shouldn't be under consideration anyway, because it's not a matter of fact. It's a one, it's a single lot. There was an application for a single lot, and the five-lot subdivision has no bearing, I think, in any event, has no bearing on the application that was approved. I think it's a separate issue, and I don't think, I really don't think it should be in the conversation. What bothers me is that where we're going with this is, what I think, where I feel we're going with this, is coming up with these is coming up with these mitigation measures to essentially, all the things that we're talking about now, I think. If this application had come before us with the level of impact of clearing, not only the trees, but the ground cover, putting down the sod. If it had come before us with that as part of the proposal, I don't, and I've been, again, been doing, we've been doing this together a long time. I don't believe this board would have approved it for a second. I think that would be a completely different, uh, result. I just, I, I can't believe that we would have done that. And to accept that and say that, and all the engineering improvements, if we had approved it, all the engineering improvements we're talking about now would be things we would have required anyway. I mean, it, it, I'm, I'm having trouble finding a justification for this board to say that, do everything, do fix, just fix it, but go ahead and, and enjoy the benefits of the impacts that you've done that we're not asking you to fix. I gotta tell you, and we're talking about invasive species. I mean, we, we talk about, gee, you know, you should be allowed to go into a forested area and take out the invasive species, and we think that's a good thing. I'm guessing there is no greater North American invasive species than the North American lawn. The amount of water that it requires, the amount of pesticides it requires, the phosphates that go into, into the drainage system, the fact that it, it can't really, as, as I think, Dick, you just said, it really doesn't retain any water very well, especially on steep slopes and a lot of steep slopes up there. We, we, we would be approving one of the most invasive species on the continent in, in replacing an area which actually was a natural habitat. I mean, that was a natural forested habitat there, and it's all gone. It's all gone. And I went to the, I went to the, went back to the code 'cause I was just curious about, Jennifer, I was curious about our authority when it comes to this, you know, where we are now, what we can do and, and, and can't do. And there's violation that, and the court's properly there. But that doesn't mean that we don't have discretionary authority in certain matters, and we do it on every application. We talk about where that line should be, clearing and grading limit line. And we negotiate that, and we do it, and we do it because actually in the town code, it gives us, I think, it gives us not only the authority to do it, but the responsibility to do it. And I just went to, I just went back to regulated activities. This is the 121-3. It's gonna be, be very quick here. It shall be unlawful to conduct direct or indirectly any of the following activities. And the first one on the list is A, any clearing. Determination approval authority. In making its determination, the approving authority, that's us, shall consider the following factors. The environmental impact of the proposed removal. And under 7F, wildlife habitat as defined in 121-2. 121-2 says wildlife habitat. The arrangement of food, water, shelter, or cover and space necessary to ensure the existence and survival of wildlife. And in our latest town comprehensive plan, we make, the town has made, the, the, the public has made, I think, a pretty strong statement about, we always argue about the term, but call it character. But I think that embedded in that term is the forested habitat and the wildlife that ha, that inhabits it. And that's why we have wetland regulations. That's why we have grading and clearing limit lines. And that's why we have the authority to manage them. And it just seems to me that we need to get back to square one. It seems to me that we ought to be talking about, in addition to fundamentally, everything, all the engineering structures that need to be put in place to fix what was done wrong, need to be put in place. But more fundamentally, there is a very, very big, big impact there which has to do with the clearing of the land and the installation of this lawn and, and the, the decimation of, I don't know how many extra outside of the wetland setback area, which I think somebody calculated is five acres. There's at least another five acres or six, I don't know how much it is. I don't know if anybody's done the calculation, which are beyond the wetland, I'm sorry, the clearing and grading limit line, that have just wiped it all out. So I, I, at this point, I, I have a feeling about what ought to be done about this. I think that we would need, at least I would need to talk to Jennifer about, about, the, whether we can do it, and talk among ourselves whether we think we should do it and the efficacy of doing it if we decide to. I'm not sure whether there, I'm, I'm ready to sort of float that yet without first having some, uh, some advice and counsel on this. Uh, and we can do that tonight and then reconvene or do it some other time. But this is a severe problem. And it seems to me that if we let this one go, you'd look at that hillside there. You go down, is it Chether Road or Sorrel's Road?
Uh, Sorrel's.
Sorrel's, go down Sorrel's Road. It's this great, one of our great wooded valleys. And there's this piece of this hillside that goes, I think it's all the way up to the ridge. Pretty much all the way up to the ridge has been cleared. If we let this go, imagine one day, driving down Sorrel Street and having that forest gone, because we would be opening up the doors. Once we let this happen, I can't imagine how we'd come back and say to the next guy, oh gee, you know, you shouldn't have done that. But we let the other guy go, so I guess you can do it. I mean, it seems to me, we have an authority here. The reason we have the authority is to exercise it when necessary. And we're pretty good at, at, at working with people. And I, I think that, I think this board is actually very generous in working with people 'cause these folks are our neighbors. But in this particular case, it's our job to protect our neighbors. And it seems to me that this is, that this is one of those cases. And so I was trying to figure out, well, how do, how do you, how do you address this without being too legalistic about it? I mean, how do you get to, to the core of what this is all about? And I came, I'm gonna read something here, but it's early, it's gonna be five minutes, I promise, no more than that. But I'm gonna read something here that I came across the other day. It's, it's a little, it's a little essay. And it must be important 'cause it's actually got a title to it. And the title is "Under the North Star." "The gladiolas are boisterous this year. They're having a party in the vegetable garden out back. And dressed in their brightest, they're making a real show of it among their more purposeful neighbors. Some are getting a little tipsy, and more than a few have collapsed into the asparagus shade, napping off the excess of little too much summer rain. We put them in a few years ago when it became apparent that our at-home family, in decrease from five to two, could no longer eat all the produce this Newcastle land provides. So we had to cut back a little. We still get more than our share of four different kinds of berries, three of peppers, three of tomatoes, cucumbers, potatoes, three of lettuce, carrots, beets, beans, silver queen corn, okra cauliflower, and of course zucchini. It's pretty much the A and P out, well, you can tell when this was written, pretty much the A and P out there, and then some. Egyptian onion and a rhubarb that makes an early season pie worth living for. It's a wonder to me to watch all this happen year after year. That bare patch becomes so bountifully good to us. But that garden is just the small thing we nurture in a larger field of gifts. The animal life around here is remarkable in its variety. Deer, of course, the toughest-nails groundhog, but also muskrat, fox, coyote, raccoon, possum, blackened garter snake, frogs, geese, ducks, a great owl who lives in the marsh across the road, wild turkey, and snapping turtles. You figured out by now that there's water here, a pretty large pond that's chock full of fish, mostly little ones and formerly called sunfish. Sunnies, or more deliciously known as panfish when I was a boy, and what I swear a trout. I know it can't be because trout are the most intolerant when it comes to their water. They insisted be clean and cold, and here we are in the suburbs. I don't fish this pond, but I pulled a lot of trout directly from water to campfire. And these cruising shadows look like trout to me. I like to think they are. And then there's the blue heron. When we first moved here, our youngest boy ran into the house one early morning to tell us there was a dinosaur bird down at the pond. Well, you can guess who it was down there, having a breakfast of those delicious sunnies. I don't know much about these birds, their lifespan and so on, but it's been fifteen years now and the heron still dines at the pond. My habits have changed lately, and the blue heron's become a friend to me, if a little standoffish. We have a new puppy, and his early morning schedule moves through him regular as a 6:03 rolling down the Hudson. So to the chatter of the sparrows again trying to pick the latch on the berry cage, coffee in hand, I visit the pond with the puppy, just as the sky is coming full blue. And some mornings, my friend is there too, eyeing the shadows. The pond has a long shoreline, so he can go about his business while we go about ours. But I like to think the bobbing of his head to the water is as much as a greeting to me as it is another fish on the menu for him. The pond is one of four inline water bodies that are fed by a stream back in the woods and ends locally in a marsh across the road. The wildlife moves pretty freely along this corridor, seemingly unperturbed by us humans living beside it and undaunted by the barrier of the road that bisects it. One day, a large snapping turtle decided to mosey to the marsh and stop traffic on the road. There's something in the eye of a big snapper looking back at you. That's a quick education. No one wanted to just suggest he move any faster. One more observation than I'll let it be. My father was a career Navy pilot who, as a young man, learned to fly back when, when navigated by the stars. When I was a boy, he taught me the more obvious constellations. He taught me by using the cup of the Big Dipper how to find the North Star. And he taught me the wondrous fact that every night, every star in the heaven dances to its tune. You can visit those stars most nights here, especially in the winter, when they appear so bright and hard, dancing up there over the garden, the pond, and our town. These scenes are repeated throughout Newcastle from east side to west. Take a morning walk, drive slowly, look closely. Wherever there is a stream, a pond, a stand of trees, a meadow, or a night sky not polluted by overdevelopment, there are these glorious riches we share in common. For all of this, we owe a debt and an obligation, I believe. The debt is to those people in our community of Newcastle and the larger community of our state for the hard work and caring over the many years that have gone into preserving, preserving these wonders for us and for our children. The town boards, zoning boards, environmental protection committees, and planning boards who draft the laws and monitor development to try and make the wise decisions to keep everything in balance. They nurture the larger field of nature's gifts that surround us. It's a delicate task done under terrific pressure that sometimes goes through a brutal process for which they often unfairly take the heat. But that's the job, done for us folks in our name. For all that, I think the evidence is, for the most part, they have done a pretty good job. It's been a really good season this year, and good seasons here are among the best anywhere. If you don't agree or you have your doubts, you can ask my friend down by the pond. He'll tell you the fishing's good.
Good. Would you like a copy of that so you can take the messages that are in that and work on solutions?
Yes.
Who wrote that? That are along the restoration line. Is that okay, Tom?
I think it's, I, I, thank you, Tom. It was, um...
I mean, to me, that's why we do all of this.
Yep, yep. But I think, I think you've raised some good issues, and, and I think they're important. So for example, I think it's perfectly fair for this board to, um, get information and do a comparison in terms of what those impacts were with the five lot. We have all the information. It was all approved. It went through the process. We know what those are. We can quantify those. And we could measure that with what we see now and see if that makes, see what we think about all that. And I mean, that's something I think that we should, if the, you know, applicant wants to work with us and avoid prosecution, I think that's the, the sort of thing that we could... Start.
I would make an amendment to that.
Sure.
That if there's gonna be any comparison, it should be in accordance with existing regulations. Not the regulations that existed in 1997.
Good, good, absolutely.
And I, I just, we can do that exercise, but for me, it's a, it's a nonstarter. It's not a five lot subdivision proposal. It's just not.
Well, and with the...
And it's 1997.
And with the rules, you may not get five.
That's correct.
You may only have three, which then cuts the amount of stuff down for the comparison.
I understand. I, 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 one comment I wanna make, though, is within very close proximity. A lot of what you say really predicates that there is an inherent advantage of wooded areas versus meadows. They're two indifferent environments. Very close to here, there's, what, the Nature Conservancy, meadows and fields, which I'm involved in, I cut and, and maintain trails there. And, you know, it's got its own inherent beauty. It's got its own inherent importance. It's got its own species. I certainly understand that these folks have changed things and, and, and made it different. But I don't, from my own personal standpoint, if, if that environment is vital, sustainable, and, and works, meadows are just as important in this area, in fact, more important because they're more threatening. We have so few of them. So I, I, I look at meadows as an endangered species in this area. So it's just one person's take on it, but I mean, I'm involved in it 'cause I work hard to keep probably about fifteen acres of meadows open, uh, close by. And I think it's an important exercise, so...
Well, okay. I don't disagree that meadows are, are habitat-rich environments, species-rich environments, and are good. But what we've got out here is we've got a, got a lawn, and that's not a meadow.
Yeah, that's correct.
So if, if, if we're suggesting that, that the future of that cleared area is one of a meadow environment that is actually treated as a, as a natural meadow, and there would be a, a mowing protocol for it, maintenance protocol for it, we need to decide, well, what kind of meadow is it gonna be? Because there are meadows in their meadows. And are we going to allow any other species, any wooded, any wooded species to be allowed to grow in there? I mean, so it's, if we're talking about some restoration to a natural state of some kind, I'm, I'm on board for that conversation. But I, I, at the same time, believe that this was an egregious, egregious assault at, at the town, the town's codes, the people who sit on these boards, the staff who do their best to, to preserve all of this. And I am not, I personally am not, am not... I just am not on board with just accepting this as a, as a pre-existing condition because it's not. And I just, I believe if we let this go, we have another case where we have this kind of a problem on a much smaller scale, but no less important. If we let this go, I just feel that, that, I, I just think that we're really, there's no reason to be here. It's just, it's just so egregious that we're opening the door to more of the same. And there are people who just will just run right over us and come back and then say, I'm sorry, is it okay? I mean, apparently, we're not even hearing, I'm sorry about this. I mean, I haven't heard yet, anyway. We all have a job to do here. And I think that sooner or later, you gotta say no. You just have to say no, otherwise you just don't even show up.
Well, I think that, that the, the restoration has to be part of it. Things I'm talking about, that I talked about in part are measures that have to be done right away because ice on the road is totally unacceptable.
I agree.
And the restoration, someone has to, you know, put some really hard thinking in it because I think that one has to consider what was there beforehand. I mean, photographs help a little bit. I mean, you, we had two views when we walked up. When you walked up on the left were big trees and an area that had just twiggy trees and broken limbs and no understory. Whereas if you look up way on the top of the ridge, it appears at least that the forested area up there is more intact. Now, I may be wrong on that because I didn't go up there. But I would be looking to, you know, to have some restoration of the forested area. I would want, you know, some way that, that we're not cutting off a corridor, you know, that would be from over the ridge and then down to the wetlands where the water is. You know, because that's where mammals would tend to, to go. So there has to be some thought with that. And I think Steve can help on a lot of that, you know, and see what kinds of things that could be done to make this into more of a preserve for a wide range of flora and fauna that would make sense, that fits into what this, um, previously undisturbed area would have supported.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think hopefully the applicant's hearing that there's a great deal of seriousness, would take this extremely seriously. And, and whatever we come up with in terms of restoration protocols, et cetera, we don't... even have enough information at this point, but what we...at least from my standpoint. But there are going to be significant protocols, significant requirements, significant conditions imposed, and I had written to Jennifer, and as far as I'm concerned, I don't know if it's supported in the code, she'll have to advise, I believe it puts the entire site in play in terms of review by the planning board. I take this as now a site situation that we have to deal with. I'm not quite sure where we are in terms of how we're going to deal with that, but that...it's...at least, I wanted to make sure that the applicant understood that there was a great deal of concern with what's out there. I think we even voiced that when we were out there at the site. And, you know, I think we're going to be looking for staff and board members, ERB, to come to us in terms of what they suggest that we need to look at, what the protocols should be, what we want to do in terms of restoration management, et cetera. So, it's early on, but I think it was so fresh, at least from my standpoint, I just wanted to get thoughts out there in terms of certainly possibilities, and I think you've heard a fair range of concerns and responses.
Yeah. Thank you. And I especially am intrigued by this notion of a meadow environment, it's a real habitat, sort of rich meadow environment, and how that could add to...and if you...maybe, Steve, you would be the one to sort of begin to think about what those options are, not only in terms of the different qualities and grades of meadow, however that's done, but, you know, what kind of maintenance requirements are involved in that? I mean, there's water up there. I guess that could help, right? So, it would be interesting to see what might come out of that.
Yep.
Yeah, we could make water be there with the impoundments for percolation to keep the...
Oh, you create a wetland up there, which would be even better.
If I may.
Sure.
If I may, because I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the applicant understands where the board is coming from, but I think it's up to the applicant to respond, and Steve, Bob, myself will review what they submit, and then we can work with you to address further what you're looking for. But I think to ask Steve to come up with a meadow treatment is really not under his responsibility. It's really the applicant has to show, has to establish the baseline of what was there, where we are today, and what they feel mitigation is.
I'm not suggesting that we do the applicant's work. They are under the obligation to do all of that.
Correct.
But also, I want to be taking a proactive approach here.
So, Steve, can you answer questions?
Absolutely.
Right, and I have had a lot of experience with doing meadow, you know, coming from the Midwest, working with prairies, and one thing that I think we're fortunate in this case is Glenn Tyser's firm had...I've worked with him on a lot of meadow projects, you know, so they have a good, you know, working knowledge and understanding of what it takes to really create natural meadows, you know? So, I think we're a step ahead, you know, than where we would be without that.
I do have a question, though, about the fact that it was previously a forested area, and we're talking about perhaps looking at a substitution of a meadowed area. So, you know, we talked when we were doing the master plan, we talked about biodiversity corridors, and this certainly was a big corridor, you know? It's a very large property, and it feeds down into the wetland across the road. And if...how does that...how does that impact the sort of...the, you know, the critters that live there? If you're taking away a habitat that they needed for this corridor, and you replace it with a different kind of habitat, what happens to the animals who were there previously?
That has to be a factor and a consideration, because if the...
I think that's something the applicant has to study and aspire with.
Yeah. So, maybe you put back a corridor, a forested area...
Well, maybe, except that you have to consider that...
But this is very...
This is a...
This is a lot of rock face on here.
This is very steep and everything else, but there could be, you know, something that comes out this way, but that's up to them to...
But I think to Sheila's point, you know, the best strategy would be to look at what the landscape is telling you, you know, in terms of the slope and how it's developed, and you actually work to create microhabitats within, you know, that whole forested landscape. And so, you know, meadows are an important element, but you also want to look at the forest community and, you know, the repairing habitat adjacent to the trim and water course. And, you know, there's a lot of features that need to be taken into consideration to really, you know, accomplish the objectives of, you know, water quality and retention and, you know, recreating habitat, you know, and recreating more of a natural corridor.
This is interesting to me as a...potentially as a...as setting a...potentially setting a policy whereby if somebody really wants to do that kind of understory clearing, and we see benefits in creating a meadow, we discover by this process with this applicant, it could be something that, if it seems to make sense, it could be something that we offer up as on other applications if we choose to do so, if we have that kind of discretionary authority, it could be quite interesting. In some places, it probably makes sense to make a meadow, in some places, it doesn't. I'm not sure that on this hillside, it makes sense to make a meadow yet, and you'll help us with that.
No, I think you have to look at it more as kind of a puzzle.
Right.
You know, of what makes sense, you know, that's going to really be self-sustaining long-term.
Right, and clearly, based on the slopes, you know, Bob's got to weigh in in terms of what has to be done, and those slopes are just extraordinary.
I say one thing, I mean, there's an extensive stormwater report that still has to be done, so hopefully, they'll do that sooner than later, because we can't make...I can't make any determinations on what's needed for mitigation for the roadway until Barry does a full complete stormwater report like I outlined in my last memo, so hopefully, they'll get on that quickly.
So, what I would suggest is, we've heard some ideas here. I think perhaps it would be good if, you know, we're not going to plan it for the applicant, but perhaps we can set up our library of things that we want to see and hear and have included in your study so that we can all start to get some information here that helps us determine what might be the best resolution of this property. And I...it's probably...there's a wide array, and I think we've hit a number of these issues now, but I, you know, we're not going to resolve these this evening, and we're not going to resolve them for you, but it's something that you guys are going to have to provide to us. And I guess, to Tom's earlier point, we'd need to hear from you guys, though, as representatives of the applicant, where you are in terms of working with us and cooperating with us, because if we're just wasting our time up here, we just turn it over to the town prosecutor and off we go, I guess.
Well, I think we'd do more than that, but we'd at least do that.
Yeah.
Right. I think it could be...I'm sorry, just one more thing, just to follow up on this. I think it really could be sort of groundbreaking, no pun intended, a groundbreaking sort of avenues to go down with respect to adding something in our toolkit that would be beneficial to the town and to property owners and applicants, if we could find a way to, you know, find a way to sort of, you know, get through all of this and come to some agreeable end that we could apply to other locations.
So, I'll open the floor to you.
All right. So, thank you. And for the record, Brad Schwartz from Zerrin Systems on behalf of the applicant, Almane LLC, joined by Glenn Tyser, Seth Tyser, and Barry Naderman. Thank you for your time on Saturday. Thank you for inviting us here today, even on short notice. Always glad to come and be before your board. Mr. Curly, first. I thought...I offered an apology the first time we were here. If I didn't, or either way, to reiterate tonight on behalf of the client, the client is sorry. We're sorry. We've been doing this for too many years. This development team has been before the board for too many years. We don't want to be here tonight having this discussion.
Yeah, we don't want to be here either.
So, I could assure you, we have had many discussions with the client. The client understands the seriousness of the situation.
Fair enough.
We do as well.
Thank you.
And to the board in general, we had also made the point at the last meeting, site visit Saturday. Yes, you have our commitment to work with the board. A lot of the ideas that you've already mentioned tonight, we've been kicking them around since Saturday morning. So, we're on it. We're with you. Happy to obviously incorporate Steve's input and, you know, benefit his knowledge in coming up with a plan that will work. And while we're on the topic of apologies, real quick, I know it also came up on Saturday to Mr. Seoli, I have heard some of the interactions that occurred at the site when you were first out there with the site contractor, so an apology to you as well for the discussion that initial day. So, we're here, we want to work with the board, and we'll get going on the plan and on these changes.
Jennifer, it does remind me of something, comments. As I understand it, the regulations are drawn up so that it's any person. So, to the extent that we have a contractor who performed all this work, does not the regulation also apply to the contractor as a person under our regulations? And should we not be...or should not the prosecutor be working with the contractor as well?
Yep, so there are a couple of different enforcement mechanisms, and I'm mainly looking at the steep slopes chapter of the code, because that's the permit that's within your jurisdiction for this application. ERB has wetlands, and Steve Coleman has tree removal. But the...each of the enforcement mechanisms does state that it's any person who undertakes the regulated activity. Person is defined in the code to be, you know, not just a property owner, but, you know, corporate entity, contractor, et cetera. So, yeah, I mean, the town prosecutor and the town do have the option to file charges against the contractor and any of the individuals that perform the work on the property.
It seems to me, just one person, but again, echoing some of the comments we've heard from Tom and Dick and Sheila from our visit, this is such an egregious violation, such a willful one. Do we make a recommendation to the prosecutor that we believe that the contractor should be involved in...receive a ticket in a violation and be brought into this matter as well? I would recommend it, because it's, again, it is...it was outrageous.
Yeah, I would second that, so that's...
And Jennifer, I wanted to ask you about the jurisdictions on this.
Yeah.
What triggers the jurisdictions in terms of, you know, ours is limited to steep slopes? What about trees, based on the quantity of trees? Does it still stay within Steve, or...
No, for trees, it's the town environmental coordinator is the approval authority, except when the planning board is reviewing a site plan subdivision or special permit. So, we have no site plan here, no subdivision, no special permit. So, the town environmental coordinator is the approval authority for trees. The ERB is the approval authority for wetlands, again, except where the planning board is reviewing a site plan subdivision special permit. And for steep slopes, the planning board is the approval authority for disturbances to very steep or extremely steep slopes. So, that's your trigger for the steep slopes permit.
Well, the question that arises is that it sounds like since...if I'm mistaken...
You are on.
You are on.
You are on.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I don't want to talk ourselves out of a position of authority here, but what disturbances to steep...if steep slopes is our only handle on this, are there any disturbances to steep slopes that...I mean, they've been cleared, but have they actually been modified?
Well, I would say that if the vegetative cover is gone, that it's been modified, and then even though there's grass, grass will give up soil, and it will...
I'm totally on board with that. I thought that steep slopes was essentially changing the grading, that that was the primary criteria.
Oh, that's a good point.
I don't know whether it is or not.
Steep slopes, if you read it, it's any disturbance to any vegetation.
There you go.
So, you don't have to re-rate it.
Right.
Yeah. You have to mess it up. That's all you have to do.
By definition, that's a disturbance based on steep slopes.
Right.
Chapter one.
Thank you.
I also...was it...am I mistaken? Were...was the ERB looking to us on this one? Do...were you sort of holding fire for now, waiting to hear from us on this one with regard to a violation?
I think...
Or was it the other one?
No, it was this one, both, actually. And, you know, with the ERB's discussion, you know, they have been in front of the environmental board a couple months ago. And I think from the environmental board's viewpoint is they would encourage, you know, a joint effort between the two boards, you know, to work together to, you know, come up with a plan that satisfies, you know, all of the permit requirements. And I, you know, I'm struggling with how best to do that, because I don't think it would be productive to have the applicant go back and forth between the two boards, you know? Would it make more sense to...
Well, yeah, talk about that.
You know, joint meetings or something to, you know, help the process.
What I would, subject to Jennifer's approval, is I think I would take it from the standpoint that we would ask the applicant to actually submit a site plan amendment application, thereby bring it before the planning board, and then we get all coordinated with Steve and with ERB, do it under one hat. I think it's more efficient. I think we will have everyone working together in that point. I guess it would be conditioned upon the applicant filing that site plan amendment application, but again, in cooperation with us, I think it would really help things. Because I'm a little concerned that we have this...I'm not going to use the word segmented, because that's the wrong word on the secret, but...
There's a lot of...
Ping pong? Okay, that's a technical word. Ping pong. I would...if that can be done, I think that's the way we should try to handle this. And if the applicant's willing to do it...
Yeah, I mean, to the extent it is not technically triggered under the code, which I suspect it's not a trigger for a site plan, we would need the applicant's, you know, voluntary submission of that application.
Be a way to get everything done sooner, I would think, or at least in more coherent processes, coherent as this can get. Right.
To avoid the ping pong.
Yeah, because it saves money, saves time.
I think it would be more efficient, and I...
That, too.
Yeah, for everyone.
Happy to talk to Jennifer and work out there with those procedures.
Okay.
I have one little...since I was not able to make it there Saturday, because I was in bed freezing and shit.
Microphone.
Is it possible for me to try to get out there with one of these members? I don't know if I need the whole crew, one guy or somebody?
Seth raised his hand.
Sure. And I'm... I can be pretty flexible time-wise.
That's a good lawyer. He can see behind him. That's excellent.
In your defense, Seth, you didn't raise your hand.
But Seth only goes out when it's below 15 degrees.
Absolutely. Of course. So, who would be best to talk to?
To set it up.
Talk to... Oh, well, I'll do it through...okay, I'll do this to these guys. Thank you.
I also, at some point, just so Bob knows, he happened...
Excuse me, hello.
Barry Naderman.
Thank you.
Naderman Land Planning and Engineering. I'm the engineer for the project and going to help resolve the drainage issues and stability issues on the site. You folks had the benefit of going out and taking a look and seeing some of where we were coming from. We had outlined the contributing watershed being over 600 acres, all the way from Shetter Road and so on and so forth. We also are aware of the improper positive flow of the water on the southern side. There is a culvert a little bit further down, which that area is intended to drain to, and part of the problem is possibly the maintenance of the road or shoulder is cutting off that drainage. So, I think in the immediate, there is certainly things that can be done to improve that situation. I haven't had the benefit of going out there with Bob yet, and similarly, I'm hoping that we could find a way to do that. I, you know, we didn't...he wasn't there during the walk with Steve. He couldn't make that one.
I'd like to go out there with Jerry Moore Shell.
Yeah, I think that would be a very good idea. Sure, sure. Absolutely. Absolutely. So, we'll coordinate with you and see if we can get out there and show you what I know, what I feel, and where we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that, because that'll move that piece of it along faster.
Well, assuming that we do see some sort of application into us along the lines of voluntary site amendment application, I guess, Sabrina, can you and Steve work together with Bob and also put together a memo of the kinds of things we want at a minimum at this point for the applicant to consider and address and study and provide information?
Yes.
I mean, Bob has already told about the stormwater, but Steve, we've talked about different things here already.
Yeah, we can kind of summarize some key elements from tonight's discussion for them.
Yeah, you probably already thought of these things anyway, so, yeah.
Yeah, one other thing, Bob, you asked for the stormwater, you know, the SWIP and everything, and I think that's essential and it's required, I would think, because of the amount of disturbance. The other thing is, does the SWIP have anything more than a cursory look at soil erosion? I mean, it says the factors are there, but does it do anything in the whole thinking to say, "Well, how much soil is lost per acre per year"?
There's calculations they have, and you can do the calculations, which I'm sort of Barry's familiar with to do that, if you like to see the soil loss.
Yeah, I would like...I think that would help us, you know, because once we have the baseline with the grass, you know, then we can say, "Okay, if you went to a forest or you went to, you know, a meadow, you would have this reduction."
Right.
And hopefully, restoration to what it was originally.
Do the calculations.
Right, and I think...
Set up IDEC.
Yep. Yep. And the other issue, one of the other issues, I know we were out there looking at various drains that are already there, but we weren't quite sure where all those daylighted and where they went. I know I was walking with Steve, an ERB member. So again, if you can map out all the improvements that you've done, so we know what we have already in terms of, you know, I think that was down close, prox, approximate to the house and the pool. But even so, we need to understand what we have. And you need to know what that is.
If they're going to be doing improvements, I would highly recommend getting a good survey of all those areas of where the possibility may be, where new roadway may be, where the culverts are.
Yeah, where the culverts are would be helpful, because you, you could say, okay, this one tilts to the left, that one tilts to the right.
Culverts under Sorrow Street that were-
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Those are-
Well, and, and on the, on the property too, is how do they, where do they go, you know?
And I think all the, I mean, based on your approvals, you know, where you have your cul tech now, and, you know, where it's placed, and what that's designed to absorb at this point.
Sure.
Because you're going to need all this information to figure out where we are.
I mean, hopefully, you'll get that for your stormwater report as well.
If we change things, or the applicant recommends changes and we approve them, well, then we have to make sure the changes don't exacerbate something else locally on the property, which you would do. But then we're also interested off the property.
Absolutely.
Which I, I know is on your list of things to certainly consider, but-
Well, I know you mentioned about the whole drainage area. I don't really care about the whole drainage area. I wonder how much new runoff is coming off that site based on what you did.
Understood.
That's more important than-
Excuse me.
I was sort of mind-bought too.
Excuse me. Bob cares, but not that much about that other area.
At least I know what you're going to say. It's a small percentage, but I need to know how much runoff is off that site.
No, no.
Based on the clearance, which is more important than a number than the whole tributary area.
It is, but what's also important is what, what does that number represent to the receiving water bodies?
Right.
And features.
Right. But you'll have to mitigate what's coming off that site.
And as I mentioned in the field, we're, we're not in a situation where, where the runoff coming from the site is not impacting an adjoining homeowner or yard or property.
It's a town road.
It's going, yes. No, 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 no. It's a town road. And, but it is, but it is discharged to a major, you know, to a major wetland system, which, those are the impacts that we should consider as well.
Good.
Right. Okay. Anyone else, anything? Sheila, anything else? Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. And whenever we can get material in, we'll get going. Okay? Thank you.
We appreciate you coming once again.
Again, on short notice. Thank you very much. Okay, we have one, one last item, and that is an authorization to sign a linen outside of the meeting. This is for the Beals JCT Development NY. This is the one with the town in Newcastle. An application for a resubdivision, plot approval, lot, lot line amendment, and waiver jurisdiction, Quaker Street, Route 120. Is there a motion to give me the authorization to sign this out? Is it here?
Oh.
Motion.
Motion to, second?
Second.
In favor?
All those in favor? Now, the only way we can make this work is if you close the meeting.
Yes, okay.
Sheila.
Someone.
Second?
Sheila seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Second. I mean, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay.
One of those seconds had to be a motion, Janice.